You could, you could put your notice in at 5:30 or as soon thereafter as the same may commence. Right. New numbers? Eighty percent counted.
Eighty percent counted, no?
New numbers.
So they are looking at how wind energy is converted to electrical energy, and that's a topic that they've been learning about for the last few weeks. So how energy is conserved, and it's also a timely project where we're looking at alternative energy sources and the need for that in our society. LAS will give us this equipment to use here in the classroom as part of their outreach program.
I'm having, I'm doing squares out of paper, and since it has the curve, I thought that that would help. It like curves up the plate, so I thought that that would help create wind resistance and make it faster. I'm also bending it so that it creates more resistance, so then it will create more energy.
Karen Kovall, we're really lucky to have teachers like that. She went out and led the first Empowering E M P O W E R I N G, and it's kind of a play on words, educator institute last summer with LAS. So we had about twenty middle and high school teachers that went to the power generation facilities, learned about power generation from the LAS side, but then created lessons that they could use in the classroom.
I think it's always fun. It's like, it's one thing to learn about it, and then you like, so like on the interstate, you see those huge turbines, but then it's like, you actually get to learn about it and you get to like see where in trial it is actually gonna work, or like how it actually works.
One of my favorite quotes is, and I wish I could say who said it, but nothing works harder than a curious child. And so I think any teacher who's taught, or even thinking of yourself as a student, things that you remember from school, you were probably doing something, you weren't just sitting there. And so we try to push that kind of teachable moment more and more often and not have it something that only happens once in a while.
I, I would like them to take away that wind energy is an important alternative energy source. That may be something that we use more in the future, and also that we're always looking for ways to build our efficiency with equipment. Also look at how the topics we've been learning about in physics apply to the real world.
You might be helping a student connect with their interest within school around energy production, and then they're gonna start to see school as more relevant, more interesting, because it's tied to something in their future. May not connect in that way for every student, but they're still learning the science concepts through that same activity.
I think it's important to know how things work, like and how the world goes around and how everything works. Because if you don't know it, then it just, it makes it harder to understand what you need to know.
This meeting of the Lincoln Board of Education for Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, is called to order. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Present.
Mrs. Danick.
Here.
Mrs. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Here.
Dr. Rowner.
Here.
Thank you. The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the entrance of the room. Before we proceed with the approval of the minutes, we have a special announcement. A few minutes ago, the Election Commissioner released preliminary results. With sixty-one percent voting for the bond issue and eighty percent of the votes counted, the LPS bond has passed. I want to express our appreciation for everyone who has supported this effort. The Board of Education is deeply grateful to the members of the High School Task Force and Superintendent's Facility Advisory Committee, who helped craft this proposal, Dr. Joel and the LPS District Office staff, who helped inform the community of its details, the parents, teachers, and students who stood up for public schools, and the elected officials, community and business leaders who supported this effort. We are so fortunate to live in a community that has the highest expectations of our schools and a community that so strongly supports its public schools. Thank you. With that, we have minutes from our regular meeting on January 28th for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as published. Tonight, for special reports, presentations, and celebrations of success, we have three teachers recognized by the Nebraska International Languages Association, and we will start with Connie.
Would Kellene please join me at the podium? You picked a great day to be honored, didn't you? You will never forget this. And Board, this comes to you in the form of a motion. Whereas Kellene Browning from Lincoln Southeast High School has been named the 2019 New Language Teacher of the Year, and whereas Kellene Browning has also demonstrated numerous strengths as a teacher that she will undoubtedly continue to develop throughout her career, and whereas Kellene Browning creates a positive culture of interaction with her students through a combination of humor, creativity, and the use of technology. And whereas Kellene Browning has established herself as a respected teacher and colleague, not only within Lincoln Public Schools, but throughout the state of Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Kellene Browning for being named the 2019 New Language Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska International Languages Associations. And it is signed by our Board President, Lanny Boswell, and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Stephen C. Joel. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored to work with wonderful colleagues at Lincoln Southeast and in the Lincoln Public Schools. So thank you very much for that.
Kellene, do you have anyone here you'd like to introduce?
No.
Very good.
Is there a second? Kathy?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Annie?
I don't know who you didn't introduce, but the lovely lady in yellow was very happy for you tonight. And so you, you're surrounded by support.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. Next up is Kathy.
Would Jamie Holbein Swanson please forward? And this is in the form of a motion. And this is Jamie Holbein Swanson. Whereas Jamie Holbein Swanson from Lincoln North Star High School has been named the Nebraska 2019 Spanish Teacher of the Year. And whereas Jamie Holbein Swanson is widely respected by her teaching peers at Lincoln Public Schools and is routinely sought out as a professional source, resource, and mentor. And whereas Jamie Holbein Swanson strives to prepare her students not only for excellence in Lincoln Public Schools, but for their lives beyond high school. And whereas Jamie Holbein Swanson possesses a deep love for teaching, which is evident to every, anyone who visits her classroom. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Jamie Holbein Swanson for being named the 2019 Spanish Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska International Languages Association, signed by Board President, Lanny Boswell, and Superintendent, Dr. Stephen Joel. Congratulations, Jamie.
I couldn't not take this opportunity to say today was brought to us by the letter P. And we'll talk about it as a product. I am a product of Lincoln Public Schools. I went to Hawthorne, to Prescott, to Irving, and then to Lincoln High. And at Lincoln High, George Sidlaczek, bless his heart, he took me for two periods a day so I could throw pots and load kilns and create glazes and do all those fun things. One day he said to me, Jamie, have you ever thought about being a teacher? I was like, oh, Mr. Sidlaczek, you gotta be kidding me. You don't make any money and nobody gives you any respect. Why would I do that? I see him now and he winks at me and we're all good. The other P is, this is where I spent twenty-three out of my twenty-five years in education. And I would like to commend this Board of Education and the previous Boards of Education for providing the professional development to teachers in this district that it makes us available, open, competent, reliable, benevolent as we serve our kids. So thank you for that. I fell in love with teaching at Pound, and I had a mentor there, and this is gonna come back around. I also fell in love with professional development, because Dr. Dibler walked in with that skillful teacher continuum from detesting to winning and how to get kids' attention. And he had planted people in that room. He interacted with every single one according to that plan and then processed the process with us. Did you see how I talked to that teacher? Where did that land? I was like, you are a genius. I love professional development. The next thing I knew, I was applying for Southwest High School. I wrote in that cover letter, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. How ironic is it today that we just passed a bond to continue that for all of our kids? That makes me very proud. At a, the District Office as the Curriculum Specialist for World Languages and for Professional Development, that's where I was really brought in with adaptive schools and a deeper dive into cognitive coaching. I chose my mentor. Dr. Larson did not know, like, I don't tell people who my mentors are. Like, there are people I go to, like, you choose your people. Cogent decision-making under competing demands. That is what I learned from him, and that is what I continue to take with me from the District Office. You know, tell me with whom you walk and I'll tell you who you are. North Star is an amazing place to be. I'm walking with incredible people every day. I want to thank the Nebraska Association of Teachers of Portuguese and Spanish, as well as the Nebraska International Language Association, Kara Heminger, the leadership, the teachers, the kids. It's an amazing place to be. We have a bilingual education fair every fall that's part of our Spanish for Spanish speakers curriculum. I now have the opportunity to walk up to kids after they tell me what they want to be, and I say, so yeah, have you ever thought about being a teacher? I've noticed some things about you. I think you'd be really good. My intent is to bring those kids back to us so that they can stand in front of you someday and say, thank you to the previous Boards, to these Boards, to the leadership we have in this district, to all the teachers who come to work so full of joy and energy every day. Thank you. And can I introduce my family?
Absolutely.
Jim and Suzie Swanson, my dad and my stepmom, my sisters Sarah and Sadie, my adorable nephews. Probably the ones with the most flexibility, my husband Justin Holbein and Oliver Holbein. Every time I took a new job, I had to go back to school because I needed to know more about how to be a leader at Southwest. Right? How to serve new hires. They were so flexible. I'm going back to school. My stepmom said, what? Yeah, they've been taking care of my kids so I can go to school. So, thank you so much for that. And selfishly, I came with invitations for the Board. We are having our second annual Violentine Dance on Friday. It is, our first was last year, it was fantastic. We play Latino music all night, everybody dances. Nobody wanted to go home. Teachers didn't want to go home, kids didn't want to go home, but they have to go home at ten, because that's when it closes. You guys get in for free. For everybody else, it costs five dollars. But I have your invitations here, you show them at the door and we'll be just fine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Is there a second? Annie?
I will second that.
Discussion?
Jamie, that was the best speech ever.
Seeing none, Laura, please call the roll.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. Next up is Dawn.
My dear friends and Board colleagues. That is my sum total mastery of the French language. Which for some reason didn't stick in my head. As I recall, it means, would you like to get something to drink with me? Which, that's something I thought would be useful at some point. And so you can imagine my admiration and respect for all of our honorees tonight, but especially my new friend Sasha Van Zant from Lincoln Southwest, who has been named the Nebraska 2019 French Teacher of the Year. And I would submit the following as a motion. Whereas Sasha Van Zant from Lincoln Southwest High School has been named Nebraska's 2019 French Teacher of the Year, and whereas Sasha Van Zant has established herself as a valued colleague and creative teacher, and whereas Sasha Van Zant has worked tirelessly to grow the French program at Lincoln Southwest High School, and whereas Sasha Van Zant is passionate about the teaching of French and how it can enrich her students' high school experience, both inside and outside the classroom, now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Sasha Van Zant for being named the 2019 French Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska International Languages Association, signed by our Board President, Lanny Boswell, and Superintendent, Dr. Joel. Congratulations.
Good evening, dear members of the Board of Education. It's an honor to be here today. I was, I'm not gonna lie, I was a little bit starstruck to see you guys all together in one place. But I want to say thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I want to say thank you to my family, to my dear husband, who's always been my rock and support, cheerleader on the sideline, and cheerleader on the field as well for me. My little kids that always support me. That, you know, my, today my little one was here, is like, Mom, don't be nervous, we're here for you. So, thank you, Casey. And I also want to say thank you to all of my colleagues. I'm actually pretty excited because there's a number of my colleagues that shaped and immensely affected the way I teach and the way I am in my classroom. Whether, you know, I spent one year with Kristen Tang in her classroom while I was planning, so the, the joy of sharing classroom space. But that was one of the most amazing experiences for me, and I talk about that to the day. Jamie, who provided me opportunities that not only helped me grow professionally, but also just as a human being. Kara, thank you for all of your leadership as well with Nyla and a lot of other supports and emails that you send out when we talk about things we want to teach our students. And I'm really thankful that we have among French teachers, this network, network of teachers, and we are willing to share, and every French student, or every French teacher in our district, I feel like, is so generous and so sharing and just wants you to be very successful in what you do. So I'm very grateful for that. I want to thank the schools that I worked at. In my first four years of teaching, I found myself in three different schools. I want to thank my administrators because they somehow trusted my passion for languages and they trusted in the work that I do, and they allowed me to grow French program. We nearly doubled at Southwest with our French, French student numbers. I want to thank Lincoln Public Schools. I have not worked in any other district than Lincoln Public Schools. And as a matter of fact, after interviewing in Omaha Public Schools while I was searching for the job seven years ago, I called back to Human Resources and I said, I will wait, I am committed. There's no other place that I want to work at. And so it's really exciting for me to be here, and I love everything about Lincoln Public School, and I feel very, very supported here. And lastly, I want to say a huge thank you. I don't know if they'll hear me or not, but I want to say a huge thank you to my students. Makes me a little emotional, you guys, but those guys have been like the best teacher in my education or in my teaching career, because that's the everyday communication. It's the relationships that we build, and this is just really exciting and what I think keeps my passion lit and what keeps things going for me as a teacher and what makes me want to return to classroom every day. So I thank you all, and I'm really excited. Thanks, guys.
Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? Kathy?
I just have one thing, the one thing, we have three of the most remarkable representatives of the teaching workforce with us here. Because it's not a job, it's not work, it's a passion, and it's a love for your students. And all three of you are so well spoken. I can't imagine what kind of fun you have in your classroom each day. Had to be better than German in nineteen seventy-two, where we had the little dictaphones and got, and barked in over and over and over again. And I see a love of language. It reminds me every day that education is about providing opportunities for students to grow at their best, and each of you inspires that. So thank you for being here tonight.
Annie?
I also love that it was my French teacher at Lincoln High who actually said the same thing. Didn't say to me, should you be a teacher? But pulled me in one day from the hallway and said, have you ever thought about trying to read more stuff? And it was kind of like, should I go? Like, she saw in me something that I didn't, which was, you should just extend yourself a little bit more. And I just love that we are having our language teachers here being celebrated because it's not a career choice, it's about enhancing and growing and educating in a scholar choice. And I just, I think it's a lovely thing, and you're very important to the growth of how our kids can learn to think and be part of that culture. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. Our next item is public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed five minutes and may provide printed materials to the Board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself, and I will inform you when one minute remains. I do not have any blue cards tonight, but if there's anyone wishing to speak to the Board, please come forward now. Seeing none, our next item is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
I would move approval of the consent items, eight point one, Human Resources Matters, eight point two, Routine Business, and eight point three, Late Requests for Enrollment Options Out.
Barb?
I second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or conflict statements? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll on the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. Thank you. For first reading tonight from the Student Learning Committee, we have item nine point one point one, Policy Fifty-four Hundred, School-Wide Multi-Tierred System of Support for Behavior. Barb?
Yes, we met the Student Learning Committee, and I will turn this over to Matt Larson to explain.
Thank you. This year, the Student Learning Committee is reviewing all 5,000-series policies, those policies that have to do with student services. This is the first of a couple of policies we'll bring to you with revisions. In this particular policy, we're essentially updating the language to match our current practice in the district. We've moved from a student disciplinary conduct punishment sort of role with respect to behavior to a multi-tiered system of supports emphasizing positive behavior. Mr. Ewing is here to respond to any specific questions you might have about this policy revision and the associated regulations.
Discussion? Kathy?
So it's not really complaining, because I like what's here. The only thing I would like to see is some sentence or some verbiage in there that says that the district, I see that the district supports, but I want to make sure that since the principal gets all this responsibility, that the district somewhere says, we're supporting the principal.
Sure.
And make sure that they have that. So I don't need it in there tonight, but if you can come up with some kind of sentence somewhere that talks about that in there, I would greatly appreciate it.
You bet. We can do that. It's a good idea. We can do that, and we'll bring it back before the next board meeting. Thank you.
Annie?
Is there, I mean, I know now we have a multi-tiered approach, and that's our, our approach now. If we ever leave that, then we would have to change the policy, correct?
Correct.
So, all right, but it matches now on what we've been doing for the last...
Probably six to seven years or so.
So we're solid in that that's the direction?
Yes.
Further discussion? Kathy?
Just one. I really like that you actually said out loud, no, we don't allow corporal punishment. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. That was a tough decision.
We had a state senator say yesterday at a, at a meeting that, well, they don't take care of kids with a belt like he remembered, and I'm just sitting there going, so I'm glad we put it in writing.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this item will come back to us at our next meeting. For second reading tonight from the Superintendent, we have item ten point two point one, Resolution for Option Enrollment Students. Is there a motion for approval? Dawn?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve item ten point two point one?
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. Also for second reading, we have item ten point two point two, United Way Proposal for Two-Generation Family Literacy. Is there a motion for approval? Connie?
I move approval of ten point two point two.
Is there a second? Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve item ten point two point two?
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. Also for second reading, item 10.2.3, U.S. Department of Justice Federal Grant, Stop School Violence Grant Program. Is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
I would move approval.
Is there a second? Connie?
I will second that.
Discussion. Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve item 10.2.3?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. And finally, for second reading, we have item 10.2.4, Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Data Center at LPSDO. Is there a motion for approval? Dawn?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Barb?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, please call the roll on the motion to approve item 10.2.4?
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes. That brings us to informational items and reports. Are there any Board committees that wish to report tonight? Seeing none, do we have a report from the Career Academy?
We do not.
Okay. That brings us to the Superintendent's Update. Dr. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. So first, I'd like to reiterate the words of Mr. Boswell and just say thank you so much to a tremendous community and tremendous staff for their support of this bond issue. And, you know, it's coincidental, but it certainly is, timing is good, that it's also School Board Appreciation Week. And, you know, our community just needs to know how much time, how much effort you put in daily basis, on a weekly basis, over the course of a year, to really, really support the work that takes place in our classrooms, which is nothing short of phenomenal. And so there's a small token of sincere appreciation there for you from the district for a job well done and for just tremendous effort to continue to do the great work that we do. You know, when we talk about bond issues, those are community report cards in a lot of ways, and it's a reflection of how we're deemed and how we're perceived. And I'm forever humbled, as I've stated many, many times. We go out and about, and many of you were out there with us and hear the testimonials from people about how much Lincoln Public Schools and Lincoln Public Schools' education means to them. And it's never lost on us because we know that with that comes a huge accountability. And so one of the things that I'm really proud of is the work of our staff. And I know Rita Bennett's here from Lincoln Education Association. As I look around the room, virtually everybody here put forward a tremendous effort to make sure that we messaged appropriately and that we're able to back up those things that we say that we're going to do. And I've heard Mr. Boswell a number of times say that, you know, we intend to be excellent stewards of taxpayer resources, and we appreciate so much the support of a very, very grateful community. So on behalf of 42,000 students and almost 8,000 staff, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education, your time, commitment, and, you know, just another indication that, you know, we're doing good work in this community and it's being acknowledged. And then finally, tomorrow is another fundraiser of all things, and it's the Lincoln Littlest fundraiser. I don't know, this is the second year for that. It's hosted by the Community Foundation. It's an opportunity for all of us to support the work that's taking place right now in early childhood around the city. And as many of you know, Prospera Lincoln, one of the, one of the, one of the three-legged stools of Prospera Lincoln is early childhood. And there's been an awful lot of success in that regard. And this fundraiser will certainly open the way for those dollars to be used. And what many are arguing today through the research is probably the most critical time in a child's life is birth through age three, four, or five. But again, another indication of a community that's willing to support the work that we do. With that, close my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. Upcoming events for the Board include February 12, Face the Chamber at noon at the Lincoln Country Club. February 17, No Elementary School. February 18, the LPS Learning Lunch, noon here at LPSDO. February 19, GNSA Meeting, 9:30 a.m. at NCSA. February 25, Career Academy Joint Board Meeting, 8 a.m. at the Career Academy. And that brings us to our Board Meeting at 6 p.m. LPSDO. That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Would anyone wishing to speak to the Board, please come forward now. Seeing none, I do not have a request for a closed session. Thank you all for attending. We are adjourned.